Chip Seal Project. Great. Sorry, did we need to take roll or is that required here?
All council members are present except Councilmember Skog.
And Councilmember Martinez.
I talked to them both today, so they're aware of the meeting. But we'll go ahead and get started then.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us. Levi and Jeff have been working diligently on our 2025 Chip Seal Downtown Restriping Project. And after some community engagement opportunities, they are ready to present to council some options that they've come up with that will hopefully satisfy our funding agency. So I'm going to go ahead and let Levi take the floor.
All right. Good evening, council. It's always a pleasure to stand before you and provide the information and answer questions that you guys have. Looks like this is going to keep popping up, Jim. So hopefully, we can avoid that throughout the meeting. Okay, so as you know, last year, we received an award for TIB funds to support our pavement preservation efforts that we try to do every year to maintain our streets. Part of that funding will offset the cost to do that. Essentially, we'll save 80% on this year's project with the utilization of these funds. We've had a couple of public engagement events, and a lot of the discussions about what you're going to see today started years ago when we started meeting with the Downtown Business Association and the request for more parking. You guys have seen that and probably heard it through several council meetings. This project is, you know, includes downtown streets, Hill Street, and Wheeler Road. That's in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen, and this is similar to a project we did back in 2009 where we chip sealed the streets downtown. We're essentially doing that project again. And at this time, when we blank slate the street, we're going to reconfigure the striping to look for more additional parking, also enhance the flow of traffic by adding turn lanes, and then we'll have some leftover space that we'll utilize for bike lanes and/or sharrows. With some of these changes to the striping, we will obviously see safety improvements by shortening the crosswalks and reducing those conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles, and then also reduce future maintenance costs because we will have less through lanes to maintain. So here's essentially what the grant application entailed, that we would chip seal and change and reconfigure the striping from four lanes to three lanes. We will optimize the intersections, increase parking. We'll have bike lanes and sharrows to fill in gaps and missing links, and then we will also reduce future maintenance costs. So what you have here in front of you is essentially the ADT or the average daily trips that we see on these streets that we've included in the grant application. Typically, on Third Avenue, we see about 7,000 trips per day. And then Wheeler Road, we see about 10,000 trips per day. So that's essentially from Pioneer Way out to Road L. There's about 10,000 vehicles that use that daily. Then from Wheeler at Road L and to Road N, it's approximately 7,000 trips. So that's your employees and things like that, and then the freight and the other things that access the industrial area. Fifth Avenue, we're at about 5,000 ADT, which is between Division Street and Pioneer Way. And then on Hill Street, you'll see that we're about 6,000 or just under, it's about five, just over 5,000 on that. So because of these things, because of the low ADT, we were competitive with the grant application. And we also had, you know, proposed some of the other elements that helped us be competitive to receive these dollars over the other communities that applied. This project was actually highlighted as one of the top three in the state because of what we were proposing. So if everything goes according to plan, we will show how and why this project can help save lives and money. And that's going to keep popping up. Okay, so to also prepare us for this project, we started having discussions with council last year with the proposed restriping of Third Avenue east of Pioneer Way. This was a street that sees less than 2,000 ADT, and it was a good candidate to reconfigure the lanes, which prioritized movement of vehicles past the businesses and reduced the ability or access to the businesses. So this is kind of the after, where we converted the lanes from four to two. So the streets that were eligible for funding, they needed to be classified as a collector. And so they're highlighted here in pink. Any street highlighted in pink here is eligible for that million-dollar grant that we've received from TIB. So you've got Third Dogwood, Fifth Division, Alder Hill, and Wheeler. This is the timeline of when the funds were authorized for us to use and begin to construct, design. And so we started back in February, you know, contacted the newspaper. There's been, I think, three articles about this project since we began design on it. And we've worked with community members through open houses and the Downtown Business Association. We've invited the Chamber of Commerce. So this is kind of the timeline that we're following, and it brought us to this point where we're meeting with you to present what we have learned from the community and, you know, how we're going to take all of these options that are available to us to improve the function of our streets here in Moses Lake. So there's obviously a lot of variables, and depending on what you prioritize, that changes, you know, how well your project or your streets are going to perform. And so at the end of the day, it all boils down to money. You know, how much money do you want to spend and allocate to your transportation network without sacrificing the other things that you'd like to see that's coming out of the general fund as well? So please fire those kind of things. We obviously want to be efficient and wise with taxpayer dollars, and anytime we can stretch a dollar, we try to incorporate that into projects. So this is one question I think we all have, is, you know, how many lanes are needed in a city? This is some city somewhere, I'm guessing Texas, and obviously, I would say that they have enough lanes. But then when you look at how fast the traffic is moving and how efficiently they're moving through the network, would you say that it's a success or, you know, maybe it could be better? What are the solutions when you come and face problems like this? The good news with Moses Lake is we're still, you know, deciding what we want to be when we grow up. So we can, we can look at other people and determine what is the best course of action to take. So my guess is it's in the millions. One of the things I've heard from transportation engineers is that if we add 50 lanes in each direction, you'll never have traffic congestion on that particular street. We could pursue that, but we'd have to tear down businesses, tear down homes and other things. And the good news is, is people would then be able to get through our community as fast as possible, but they probably wouldn't stop and spend money. So I would recommend we do not go that route. And as part of this project, what we're trying to do is set ourselves up to create better network. But in order to increase your network and your connections, you need money. So if we can reduce how much money we're spending on these streets right now that have low ADT, we can potentially use that savings to support the expansion of the network and connect those missing links. So for example, on Wheeler Road, we have, one mile to the south, you have Nelson Road and Road Two. For those who are familiar with that, to get from L to Road N, you have to travel four miles. But you're only two miles away. So it'd be advantageous to make that connection, and that would help dilute the network so that you don't see so much congestion and, you know, collisions at intersections, because not everybody's trying to get to the same place. They have different destinations and different origins. So with some of these savings, we can start exploring those other options to eliminate what I call superblocks, the transportation world calls superblocks, and essentially spend less money and create better or shorter trips. Because it's obviously a lot more efficient to travel less, less distance and not share the same space with other vehicles moving through the area. So some of these costs are broken down based on recent projects we've done. You'll see, you know, with the crack seal, we try to do that every five to seven years, and we spend approximately 22 cents a year to preserve pavement. That's per square yard. Or I guess a buck ten per project, right? A dollar ten. One thing to be aware of is that the first two, we can do crack seal, and we can also do single surface treatments such as this chip seal without having to improve the ADA ramps next to the streets. Anytime we do anything below or above and beyond those treatments, like double surface treatment or what a double chip is what we call it, then it triggers structural improvements, which means you have to improve ADA ramps. And fun fact, those things are out of compliance about six months after they're put in. They're always changing and, you know, altering those regulations. So even if you did something five years ago, there's probably a good chance you're going to have to tear it out and do it again to meet the new and improved regulations. So this also includes thin overlays of one inch and then a two-inch millinfill, which is approximately $32 a square yard. That's considerably more than a $5 chip seal. And then, last but not least, full reconstruction. That's approximately $100 a square yard. Another thing I'd like to point out, too, is on these streets that we're proposing chip seals, some of them have older water lines and older infrastructure. So you, you need to be aware that there is the potential to have to dig up a brand-new improvement to potentially replace an old water line, you know? So it'd look nice on the surface, but underneath, it's, you know, potentially still rotting based on when it was put in. As far as details with the, the
Events and a lot of the discussions about what you're going to see today started years ago. When we started meeting with the downtown business association and the request for more parking, you guys have seen that and probably heard it through several council meetings. This project is, you know, includes downtown streets, Hill Street and Wheeler Road. That's in the bottom right hand corner of the screen and this is similar to a project we did back in 2009 where we chip sealed the streets downtown. We're essentially doing that project again, and at this time when we blank slate the street, we're going to reconfigure the striping to look for more additional parking. Also enhance the flow of traffic by adding turn lanes. And then we'll have some leftover space that we'll utilize for bike lanes and or sharrows. With some of these changes to the striping, we will obviously see safety improvements by shortening the crosswalks and reducing those conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles and then also reduce future maintenance costs because we will have less through lanes to maintain. So here's essentially what the grant application entailed that we would chip seal and change and reconfigure the striping from four lanes to three lanes. We will optimize the intersections, increase parking, we'll have bike lanes and sharrows to fill in gaps and missing links and then we will also reduce future maintenance costs. So what you have here in front of you is essentially the ADT or the average daily trips that we see on these streets that we've included in the grant application. Typically on Third Avenue, we see about 7,000 trips per day. And then Wheeler Road, we see about 10,000 trips per day. So that's essentially from Pioneer Way out to Road L. There's about 10,000 vehicles that use that daily. Then from Wheeler at Road L and to Road N, it's approximately 7,000 trips. So that's your employees and things like that and and then the freight and the other things that access the industrial area. Fifth Avenue, we're at about 5,000 ADT, which is between Division Street and Pioneer Way. And then on Hill Street, you'll see that we're about 6,000 or just under about five, just over 5,000 on that. So because of these things, because of the low ADT, we were competitive with the grant application. And we also had, you know, proposed some of the other elements that helped us be competitive to receive these dollars over the other communities that applied. This project was actually highlighted as one of the top three in the state because of what we were proposing. So if everything goes according to plan, we will show how and why this project can help save lives and money. And that's going to keep popping up. Okay, so to also prepare us for this project, we started having discussions with council last year with the proposed restriping of Third Avenue east of Pioneer Way. This was a street that sees less than 2,000 ADT and it was a good candidate to reconfigure the lanes, which prioritized movement of vehicles past the businesses and reduced the ability or access to the businesses. So this is kind of the after where we converted the lanes from four to two. So the streets that were eligible for funding, they needed to be classified as collector. And so they're highlighted here in pink. Any any street highlighted in pink here is eligible for that million dollar grant that we've received from T I B. So you got Third Dogwood, Fifth Division, Alder Hill and Wheeler. This is the timeline of when the funds were authorized for us to use and begin to construct, design. And so we started back in February. You know, contacted the newspaper. There's been, I think, three articles about this project since we began design on it. And we've worked with community members through open houses and the downtown business association. We've invited the Chamber of Commerce. So this is kind of the timeline that we're following and it brought us to this point where we're meeting with you to present what we have learned from the community and you know, how we're going to take all of these options that are available to us to improve the function of our streets here in Moses Lake. So there's obviously a lot of variables. And depending on what you prioritize, that changes, you know, how how well your project or your streets are going to perform. And so at the end of the day, it all boils down to money, you know, how much money do you want to spend and allocate to your transportation network without sacrificing the other things that you'd like to see that's coming out of the general fund as well. So please fire those kinds of things. We obviously want to be efficient and wise with taxpayer dollars. And anytime we can stretch a dollar, we try to incorporate that into projects. So this is one question I think we all have is, you know, how many lanes are needed in a city? This is some city somewhere, I'm guessing Texas. And obviously I would say that they have enough lanes. But then when you look at how fast the traffic is moving and how efficiently they're moving through the network, would you say that it's a success? Or, you know, maybe it could be better. What are the solutions when you come and face problems like this? The good news with Moses Lake is we're still, you know, deciding what we want to be when we grow up. So we can, we can look at other people and determine what is the best course of action to take. So my guess is it's in the millions. One of the things I've heard from transportation engineers is that if we add 50 lanes in each direction, you'll never have traffic congestion on that particular street. We could pursue that, but we'd have to tear down businesses, tear down homes and other things. And the good news is is people would then be able to get through our community as fast as possible, but they probably wouldn't stop and spend money. So I would recommend we do not go that route. And as part of this project, what we're trying to do is set ourselves up to create better network, but in order to increase your network and your connections, you need money. So if we can reduce how much money we're spending on these streets right now that have low ADT, we can potentially use that savings to support the expansion of the network and connect those missing links. So for example, on Wheeler Road, we have a one mile to the south, you have Nelson Road and Road Two. For those who are familiar with that, to get from L to Road N, you have to travel four miles, but you're only two miles away. So it'd be advantageous to make that connection and that would help dilute the network so that you don't see so much congestion and, you know, collisions at intersections. Because not everybody's trying to get to the same place. They have different destinations and different origins. So with some of these savings, we can start exploring those other options to eliminate what I call super blocks. The transportation world calls super blocks. And essentially spend less money and create better or shorter trips. Because it's obviously a lot more efficient to travel less, less distance and not share the same space with other vehicles moving through the area. So some of these costs are broken down based on recent projects we've done. You'll see, you know, with the crack seal, we try to do that every five to seven years. And we spend approximately 22 cents a year to preserve pavement. That's per square yard or I guess a buck 10 per project, right? A dollar 10. One thing to be aware of is that the first two, we can do crack seal and we can also do single surface treatments such as this chip seal without having to improve the ADA ramps next to the streets. Anytime we do anything below or above and beyond those treatments, like double surface treatment or what a double chip is what we call it. Then it triggers structural improvements, which means you have to improve ADA ramps. And fun fact, those things are out of compliance about six months after they're put in. They're always changing and, you know, altering those regulations. So even if you did something five years ago, there's probably a good chance you're going to have to tear it out and do it again to meet the new and improved regulations. So this also includes thin overlays of one inch and then a two inch millinfill, which is approximately $32 a square yard. That's considerably more than a $5 chip seal. And then last but not least, full reconstruction. That's approximately a hundred dollars a square yard. Another thing I'd like to point out too is on these streets that we're proposing chip seals, some of them have older water lines and older infrastructure. So you, you, you need to be aware that there is the potential to have to dig up a brand new improvement to potentially replace an old water line. You know, so it looked nice on the surface, but underneath it's, you know, potentially still rotting based on when it was put in. As far as details with the, the cost savings, these are some cross sections showing existing street widths and you know, how much driveline is actually needed to accommodate the amount of ADT we see today. Part of this project is not going to change the width of the, the cross section. So we can always reconfigure the striping at some point in the future if it's needed. But we're just going to reduce the amount of street that we have to maintain at this point. So what you'll see here kind of highlighted, I know you might have the slides in front of you to look at it. We could essentially dedicate 39% of some streets to just the driving lanes. So you wouldn't have to maintain a parking lane or a bike lane or a turn pocket as often as you would if you, you know, maintained it all as four lanes. So this could lead to up to a 50% reduction in cost depending on the configuration. Because again, you're only maintaining what you need to, to actually move traffic through. This is another example of the cross sections we have here and the configurations that we're proposing where we're shifting to accommodate either angled parking or parallel parking or turn pockets. So this is kind of a breakdown. So good case in point of this is you'll notice out here in the county, you have Airway Drive and Valley, Valley Road. They have three lanes and if you, if you look closely, I apologize, these slides aren't high quality. But you'll see that they did a mill and fill on the drivelines only. And they didn't maintain the turn pocket because it sees so little use, but it's still there when you need it and it won't wear as fast. So by us converting to this configuration in places, we can set ourselves up for potentially being able to do a mill and fill because everybody wants smooth streets. And the only way, you know, I feel like we can afford it and staff feels we can, we can afford it is to reduce how much we have to do it to, right? So we can stretch those dollars and, and create that network that they're looking for. Some of these ideas were presented to the community. You know, this is the, some of the feedback that we've received. It's, we've had discussions with business owners, received phone calls from community members and then obviously we've been working a lot with the funding agency. So these are their concerns I can go through them one by one, or I'd rather just keep moving forward if you're okay with that. So hold on, this thing's freezing up again.
Well, so Levi, is this the, is this the first time the council is seeing these comments?
Yeah, some of these comments are also in our frequently asked questions on the website. So I don't know if they've had a chance to look at the website that's linked via the QR code.
If, if they haven't had a chance to read this, then I, I do think it's worth taking a moment for them to look at the slide and digest it.
Okay, so.
Want to walk through it with them or give them just a chance to read, but I, I do think they need to see what the, the comments were.
Great point. So one of the first comments we received was parking requests. They want to see more, you know, more parking closer to their business. Oftentimes, oftentimes that's with angled parking, similar to what we did last year on Third Avenue east of Pioneer Way. We had one particular business owner that asked us three times through three different things and just to make sure we heard that they want more parking. So we've started working with the, the designs and the business owners following up to say, okay, how can we accomplish that? You'll see later on in the slides, this was particularly next to Rick's down on Third and I want to say Bloom, Bloom Salon. So we, you know, we heard that and they also had mentioned that some of the side mirrors of their patrons have been struck by cars. As it's currently configured, you essentially have the outside driveline right next to parking. So you know, what can we do to, you know, address those concerns? And you'll see that later on, what we, what we've proposed to address those concerns. More parking requests, you'll see there. This was from physical therapists between Dogwood and Cedar. They have a lot of okay, they have a lot of patients that, you know, are obviously going through physical therapy treatment. They'd like to get them closer to the business. So in this particular area, we're proposing diagonal parking based on the amount of volume that happens between Dogwood and the post office. It's two blocks. And so we're, we're trying to address that, that there, that comment there. There's preference for bike lanes between sidewalks and diagonal parking. And we also Brownway to Pioneer Section, the Wheeler Quarter. Okay, there's one other feed, some feedback received from the downtown business. They've got a lot of, you know, events planned downtown. Case in point this week, and they'd asked that our project not coincide with some of those major events. To my knowledge, back in 2009, a lot of the work took place in the early morning hours before businesses even started to see a lot of community members and shoppers. So we hope to work with the contractor and the downtown business association to keep them posted of, hey, this is the plan. The good news is we already have a grid network down there. So that if you close off one section of it, you don't, you know, shut down your entire street because we have that network resiliency and the additional points of access in and out of the downtown area. So we'll, we can address that, that, that one's actually fairly easy. The timeline, next comment down, expressed concern over timing due to major down, oh, shoot. I already read that one. Or was that a second one? Yeah. So another comment about timing. And again, I think we, we definitely can work with our contractor and the community to make it as easy as possible. I heard from one contractor once who was doing work in Leavenworth and so you guys have been to Leavenworth and they were doing it through, right through the middle of tourist season, which I think is every month of the year in Leavenworth. But essentially this contractor said, look, we do this for profit, not for practice. If you know a faster way of doing this, you let us know because we don't want to be here and we know you don't want us here. So I assume that'll get transferred over to, you know, that knowledge will get transferred to our contractors when they've been on this project. So that being said, moving on, another business, our comment was they wanted some feedback about now request, okay, this was a fun one. So once upon a time, there was back end parking in Moses Lake. I don't know if anyone, pop quiz, who knows where that was? I'll, let's let Mark answer.
I don't know when that was, but I was involved when they tried it in Pullman not very long ago and it was a wreck.
Okay, so 20 years ago, now on Dogwood, they had proposed back end parking. There was no backend cameras really popular, you know, in vehicles at that time. So we still may be 40 years ahead of, you know, time when it, it could be popular.
Pullman just did it a couple of years ago and they literally, I can't imagine what it cost, abandoned it like in two or three months.
Yeah.
Because well, first, the first time they had a game down there, it was chaos. Yeah, well, back in and
So there was a request for back end parking. I'm aware of the only benefit of back end parking is when vehicle doors open up. It channels your children or, you know, passengers towards the sidewalk. So and then when you're exiting, that's when you can see clearly like who's coming. Again, we still may be 20 years ahead of time before we can have that conversation. But there was a request from a business owner and I don't think we can accommodate it at this time. So we won't. Traffic levels and parking, we had a gentleman stop by that was talking about the amount of vehicles that travel. We know that Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue to Division and, you know, essentially Fifth is a cut through. With some of the areas where we're proposing more parking, a lot of those like Surf and Slide Water Park, for example, their peak access time is about 11 o'clock when the park opens up. And then they stay there till about 6:30. So that is offset from the commuter trips, which are typically earlier in the morning and, you know, later into the evening. And then, you know, the time of the big festivals and other events. I've heard that if you go to a Mariners game, you shouldn't have the expectation that you're going to get out of there in five minutes. And so I think that would transfer here to Moses Lake when you have big events. At, at that point in time, we just have a ton of people in the area. Take your time. Hope you had fun at the, you know, Spring Fest or whatever. We'll get you out of there, but it's not going to be, you know, as fast as possible. And the good news is, is it's only for a few blocks. Then you're on the outskirts of the downtown and you keep moving. So that was a comment. We talked a little bit more, found out his wife worked in Warden and I knew her. So that calmed him down a little bit. And we kept moving forward. But he, he left, you know, content with the answers that we had and I invited him to provide any more feedback so that we can address his comments if he, if he so chooses, because we want to do this right the first time. And okay, so moving on. Posted a additional diagonal parking on Holly Street. So next to Rick's and Bloom. Coincidentally enough, the second public meeting that we had, a gentleman shows up from the neighborhood next to Lionsfield and he said, I don't want to see any more people parking near my house. And so what we had proposed to do was in lieu of trying to put angle parking on Third Avenue where we see a lot of people just trying to move through the area. We looked at Holly Street, which is, you know, basically one block between Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue. And we said, well, hey, it looks like there's an opportunity to add diagonal parking here, which would increase the amount of parking spaces and address the, the salon and their concerns and Rick's concern. So we will do our best to try to accommodate everyone, but there's going to be times like that that we won't be able to, you know, this, please everyone. That's, yeah, good point. So.
I had a question for you. So was it cost factors to not go up toward Ricks or was it logistics issue?
So in terms of like backend parking with what we've proposed on this portion of Third Avenue is to have a center turn pocket or a two-way left turn pocket, which takes people out of the traveled way and then allows vehicles to keep moving. We're also going to be able to incorporate a bike lane, which would be a buffer to the parallel parking. So you could exit your vehicle with less stress, potentially not have your side mirrors get taken off. And it was to, in order to keep that portion of Third Avenue moving more freely, we felt it wasn't, there wasn't a real benefit to incorporate diagonal parking in that location because it's still, I would say downtown adjacent, if that makes sense. So it's built with the setbacks, like it is part of downtown, but we want to keep traffic moving at this point in time, right? So by putting it just around the corner, we can increase the amount of parking and take them, which they were happy with. You know, we followed up and they said, yeah, we're happy with that. So does that?
Yeah, so basically you're saying it's, it's a logistics issue as far as why you did it that way, not really a cost. And so they're not really going, it's not expected for them to see angled parking then in the future in that area.
Today, right? As downtown expands out, it's striping, it's one of the lowest costs, you know, for any project. So we'd be happy to, to look at that as things get reconfigured. You guys have heard some of the presentations where I've talked about utilizing Mont Lake Railroad Crossing to connect the peninsula to essentially Division, you know, at that point. And then you're addressing the cut through traffic right there. You know, if people aren't going to stop and spend time in the downtown, well, let's give them another route, you know? We're obviously limited with accesses on I-90. And so a lot of people that would take a longer distance to get back to Division, but if we were to, you know, utilize that railroad right away in the future, create another two lane crossing, it would be slow, steady, give access to the lake, those kinds of things. And, and address, you know, maybe that other concern by again, just providing that connectivity and network resiliency.
Looking at that, that crossing, are we really thinking about using that or is it just something that we're talking about at the moment?
So it was included in our future streets plan and it was also included in some other studies that we've done to explore. We also put together a one pager that we can provide to, you know, funding agencies to try to get more funding to really study the network. Because at the end of the day, I think we all recognize that in Moses Lake, we go the extra mile because our streets aren't connected yet. And we also pay for the extra miles because our streets aren't connected yet or we've overbuilt in places and it's underutilized. So another comment we had was illumination and safety. Someone also mentioned painting the decorative lighting in the downtown, you know, that's seen some, seen some years. So with the addition of parking and we're trying to accommodate the businesses during the winter months, you know, just trying to enhance the safety, we can't address that as part of this project, but we forwarded it on to you know, other staff to see if we can upgrade some of the, the lighting to LEDs to create better, you know, illumination. So that, that was one of the comments we received. And then another one was, it comes, sure.
About the illumination when Kevin, Kevin was our city manager. When we had paved Valley, because there aren't any lights in a, in part of, you know, street lights and part of it. I had asked about having that paint that striping done on there so that we could see, is that a possibility? Maybe?
The, the striping with regards to the lighting.
Illuminate, so you can see it.
We, we did start discussions with the PewDie. I put in a request to add with those, because we have the power poles running down the south side of Valley Road. There's the potential to add luminaires strategically because there are gaps. I think there's a thousand foot gap is the biggest one. And we'd like to see that closer together so that you don't.
Right to Paxton, there's no, there's no lights down in that area at all.
Yeah, there's only one on the north side there. And so I did propose one of the poles next to my, where I live, I live right there on that corner. But we've not heard back from them. So I'll follow up with them on, on Valley Road. Yep. Okay, concerned with the single lane roundabout at Wheeler and L. That is a separate project, but it, part of it is going to coincide with this because we're going to have crews in there. And with the proposed single lane roundabout that we provided the memo to council with, I think it was last December or so. He was just curious on how it would work. So we have a sample in front of you on the middle table. The yellow block you see is basically recycled laundry detergent bottles. And they last, these modular units can bolt into place and they last 50 years. So they're mounted, they're, they're designed to be fully mountable. And they're designed for freight traffic that when they're making turns, they can, you know, drive across it fully. But it does slow down every leg with the, the motorist to allow everyone to kind of move through smoothly and, and efficiently. So that's, you know, that's the obstacle that ag equipment freight, you know, is going to have to clear. And the companies that sell these modular units have seen success in the other locations they've put it. There's actually some video of a person moving a mobile home and they just drive right across the top of it. Because the intent is not to, you know, utilize the lanes when you have large loads, you can just drive across it slow and easy, right? So it's, it's part of the design is you, you try to design for the daily trips and then what can it accommodate? You know, because every once in a while you're going to get big ag equipment or oversized loads and it, you know, these types of systems can accommodate those movements through the area. So we talked about the, you know, those concerns and we're, we're confident that it'll, you know, it'll work at that location. We also heard from Group 14 and Graymore Environmental. They said, I can't tell you how many accidents I've seen at that intersection. And this is in regards to Wheeler and L. You guys have probably seen it in the paper as well. In regards to the roundabout, I'm not worried about the truck drivers at all. Something needs to be done. So we included that in there as part of the comments. We also heard from another resident expressing concern over moving traffic through Fourth Avenue. So that was part of, that was another question similar to the one before. How are we going to move vehicles through there? You know, we believe it'll work and I think our biggest concern is, you know, time, right? It's not speed. The, the lanes will accommodate 25 miles per hour. You know, the driver and their tolerance may not. But talking to, you know, the taco shop, I stopped there and I kind of talked about the project a little bit while I was eating lunch. And I said, you know, do you have any comments or feedback? Would you like to see more parking on, you know, one side of your business? And he said, well, something needs to be done because a kid's going to get hit, right? So, you know, that's the other part of this, this project is, you know, how can we accommodate the other users near the school, near the, you know, events and things that we have. And it turns out this design will still accommodate moving vehicles through the area. And I'm just going to foreshadow, we also believe that eliminating the signals at Division and Dogwood with and replacing them with compact roundabouts would allow that the, the steady stream of vehicles move through the, this network a lot more efficiently, you know, even Fourth Avenue. Because you're not queuing up and platooning. I don't know if you guys have heard that phrase before. But once the signal goes red, everyone stops. Oftentimes it's 45 to, you know, 45 seconds to a minute and then they all release at once. And people's patience is really tested at that point in time because, oh my gosh, I'm losing all this time because I'm behind the slow guy in front of me for five blocks, six blocks, whatever. If it was constantly flowing and never had to stop and it was a yield condition, we wouldn't have that feeling of, oh, I'm losing so much time, right? Because you're just constant, you know, you're just moving through slow and steady. So we're trying to look at ways to replace the fast and slow stop and go with smooth and steady. And T I B is not here. We tried to get them to pay for it because they want to see safety enhancements too. And there's the potential that we'll have additional funds. Cause they want to see safety enhancements too. And there's the potential that we'll have additional funds. That we could, you know, get it paid for to utilize these compact modular roundabouts. And reconfigure the, the lights, which those have been in since I believe the 50s or 60s. And we've already removed several other lights in the downtown area. So it's not an uncommon practice. But it would make the, the network more efficient with that smooth and steady movement. So, um. Okay, moving on. Okay, I already quoted the taco shop guy, slow cars down, some kid is going to get hit. That was a business owner one. And then, uh, we reached out to GTA. Um, one of their concerns is Fifth and Division also, they've got that new transit center there and oftentimes the buses exiting. Will sit at the light, even though no one is moving, uh, north or south along Division. So they idle a lot every day, multiple buses, that kind of stuff. Which, you know, may be in our favor to highlight that and try to get additional funds from, uh, TIB. Because there's funding agencies out there that are willing to throw money at our problems, uh, which saves us money. If, you know, if we want to pursue that, I, I think it would be beneficial. Um, and then another comment I heard when I was eating at Taco's Micasa was there was too many accidents at Fifth and Division. I do my research over lunch. Um, so th- this is just some feedback that I incorporated in here. And we've got additional feedback. We hope we get more tonight from the community. But, um, because again, we just want to make it safer, more efficient, reduce costs, spend money wisely, stretch dollars. So, um, we go to the, whoops. I went one more than I should have. So these are some of the proposed changes. Uh, you know, changing, uh, changes to the parking layout will increase access and retain throughput as requested by downtown businesses. Uh, proposed angled parking, Holly, Third Avenue, uh, from Beach to Dogwood. Fourth Avenue to Division and then Alder Street as well. Uh, single lane inputs and outputs into multiple lanes encourage passing and weaving between existing intersection controls. Adding turn lanes, reviewing signal timing and or converting stop signs and signals to roundabouts could reduce stop, go, fast, slow, platooning effect. And allow smooth, steady, uh, conditions. Converting four lanes to three will reduce vehicle, uh, ped conflicts, uh, conflict areas and shorten those crosswalks. Which will, uh, still allow vehicles to travel speed limit through the area. So. That's one of the proposals as part of this project. Uh, staff will work with contractors and public to ensure there is minimal disruption to scheduled events. Revised striping along Dogwood and, uh, are in the process of reviewing other locations for possible revisions as well. Exploring signal timing revisions and then TIB additional funding roundabout. That's another concern. Uh, that's another uh, option to address the GTA bus stops, those kinds of things. And then, um, signal timing, uh, we're, we're still going to look at the timing because it may take a while to get, you know, roundabout in if we go that route. We're going to look at the signal timing and see if there's some modifications we can make to, you know, address those concerns from GTA. And then, uh, Grant County PUD owns and operates the lighting structures and are responsible for maintenance. City Moses Lake pays a monthly rate for their operations. City staff will work PUD to discuss options for additional lighting and or increasing the brightness of existing light sources. Uh, so that's kind of the, you know, technical way I guess of saying, we're going to try and look into it, right? Um, and then bike lanes, bike lanes have been added as needed to receive funding from the granting agency. And connect existing lanes or sharrows in the downtown area. Many of the streets downtown, Third Avenue already had sharrows. Uh, Division Street or, or sorry, yeah, Third Avenue already had sharrows. So we're, we're proposing to just convert those to bike lanes and that'll act as a buffer between the parking lanes. You know, and create that separation between the vehicles. Um, so we're just enhancing the share at that point. Dogwood, uh, you know, already has bike lanes from the waterfront down to the park, Macosh Park area. And you'll see that on some of the slides. We're eliminating the sharrows from Fourth Avenue and, uh, Balsam Street out in front of us. And we're relocating them to other locations as part of the project and TIB is okay with that. And you know, it's, it's part of the reason why we got this funding is they're wanting to fill in those missing links or those gaps. And make things safer for all users, uh, that utilize our street network. Okay, so, uh, here's a slide on safety, uh, with the four lane configuration. We essentially.
Just had a quick question. Yeah, timeline. Um, so what's the range as far as the completion, would you say?
Uh, we would terminate or we expect to finish the project in September. You know, those are the final elements of it. With a construction to begin approximately July, right after July 4th, after one of the big events. So. Safety. So what you have in front of you, uh, is a four lane configuration. These are the conflict points that are highlighted. Uh, four lanes is, you know, designed to do a lot, but it doesn't do it well. When, for example, when you have a vehicle stopped in the center lane, uh, in, so from the left side of it, when they stop to make a left-hand turn into a driveway or a cross street. The, potentially the drivers behind don't notice. So you have a, a potential for getting rear-ended or, uh, you know, essentially some, uh, anxiety to make that turn left in front of the other two vehicles heading in the opposite direction. Uh, there's an effect called the shadowing effect. You know, you could see the first vehicle, but not the second vehicle behind them. This is something that I believe may be happening at Wheeler and L. You know, the semi trucks here, semi trucks here. You can't see past either truck and they're not, they're not aligned with each other. So they can't even see who they're pulling out in front of at times because of that, uh, uh, shadowing effect. So these are the conflict points with four lanes. Uh, I've also heard of this as this configuration as, um, the, the futon of transportation. Uh, it's designed as a couch and a bed, but neither one of them are comfortable, you know, so. You know, case in point. With the crosswalks, when you have four lanes, uh, this is another thing. If you kind of look closely, you'll see the, the triangle that's pointing towards the pedestrian. They are potentially obscured from, you know, car B that's approaching as well. Car A slows down and stops, but depending on the location where we have a posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour and stopping distances. You know, the second the pedestrian steps out in front of car B. It, it's a common accident across the, the nation. It's not unique to, you know, our situation. So we're trying to find ways to, you know, address this concern as well as we see the, this community is going to keep growing. And we're going to see more and more people utilizing, you know, the streets. So, uh, part of, uh, this project is to address that multi-lane thread. Okay, this one. Is essentially our first slide. So we're going to start at the west portion of the project. Uh, this is Broadway Avenue and, uh, Third Avenue. So, uh, as part of this project, we'll have more detail here in front. We did our best to try to get, you know, the whole view of slides. Um, but we're, we're essentially proposing a four to three conversion on this segment. Uh, from Broadway Avenue to Dogwood. And then, uh, you'll notice, or maybe you won't because it's tiny. Um, we've added angled parking in front of the physical therapist from Dogwood to Cedar. And that goes all the way to the, the parking lot. So. Or sorry, to the post office. Um, and then you'll see the additional parking added on Division next to our Surf and Slide Water Park. I don't know if you guys remember this, but back in the day, when you listened to the radio, Billy Kurt used to have this phrase. Uh, he called it the 99 days of summer. You guys remember that? Um, this is essentially our 99-day parking lot. That's really when it only sees people, uh, for the events that we have. And so I anticipate that it will be beneficial through the summer months to have additional angled parking there. But we're not going to see a lot of angled parking in, you know, the other days of the year. So, uh, we've proposed that as part of this project. Uh, so some of the treatments you'll see, this is a cross-section of what the, uh, the width of the street that we have right now, this is what we can configure in the lanes to accommodate the throughput. And, uh, the, the parallel parking with the buffers and the bike lanes and the, and the turn pockets. So, uh, this is one of the treatments you'll see. Uh, this is the angled parking component. Uh, we're still incorporating the bike lane connections through all of Third Avenue. And completing that link and then creating the buffer between the parking areas and an increase in parking with the angled parking. So this is the proposal between Dogwood and Alder Street. We add that additional parking, um, on, this is essentially looking east. We'll have angled parking next to the Aquatic Center and, or Surf and Slide Water Park. Sorry, I knew they changed the name. Uh, when I worked there, it was the Aquatic Center. So, um, the, and then parallel parking on the opposite side, this will be able to accommodate, uh, larger vehicles, you know, potentially RVs or uh, trucks pulling toys that want to visit the Surf and Slide Water Park while they're in town. So it doesn't all have to be angled parking, but we will increase the amount of, uh, parking stalls by doing this hybrid approach here.
Um, can you go back to Third Avenue?
Sure.
Yeah, Third Avenue, Broadway to Dogwood. So Ricks is along that stretch, right?
Correct.
Okay, so last time we talked, um, we were going to do, we, we were going to do as the business owner had requested and do angled parking there. Um, but did I just hear you say we're not going to do that now?
Correct. So I'll zoom in here. So we discussed the opportunity to utilize, uh, Holly. So I don't know if you guys are familiar with reading maps. I know it's complicated sometimes, but essentially, uh, in the center of the screen. You'll see Holly Avenue, that's, uh, or Holly Street. It's currently configured with parallel parking. So right to the west side of Ricks, we can add additional angled parking stalls there. And Bloom was content with that and, uh, uh, also, uh, Ricks, we've also where Jazzer size is at, that sees a large influx of people. So we can add angled parking on the other portion, uh, essentially the north side of Third Avenue. To see that increase in parking in, in closer proximity while still maintaining that, the throughput.
So, so the businesses, so the.
Yeah. So, and then was there another comment to that or?
So it sounds like you talked to them and said, hey, we're going to do angled parking on Holly instead. Are you okay with that? And those two businesses said yes?
The deaf, I, I know Bloom did. They were content with it. I can reach out to Ricks to just confirm. Uh, because you essentially get more parking utilizing Holly than you would if we were to make a change in Third Avenue for just this segment. It also would create kind of some complexities with traffic weaving around an angled parking section. But we can look into it further, you know, again. That's right. So there was some pushback from TIB as well. You know, for that continuity of, of how it's configured. So we, we typically designate approximately 22 feet per, um, stall for parallel. And Jeff would know that. The, where, where it becomes complicated is the problem with, with Third Avenue is you have so many driveways and off-street parking, you know? That with vehicles, uh, trying to move through the area and so many turns, you know, having the two-way left turn pocket clears, you know, indicates to other drivers, this person's intending to turn left, right? Um, so there's some predictability and we're trying to accommodate the access to the businesses off-street as well. That don't protect, don't have the frontage. So there's some technical reasons why we tried to pursue Holly. Um, you know, to maintain the function of Third Avenue. But we can potentially, you know, revisit that if you council would like us to do so. So we, Bloom was fine with it and we can confirm with Ricks.
I, from what I know about TBI, TIB, they can be flexible on this sort of thing. And as we know, TIB shouldn't be driving policy here. It should be what we want more than what TIB wants. And, um, yeah, I, I don't think it'd be the end of the world to have angled parking on Third in front of Ricks.
Can I do a follow-up question? So would, would you guys like to see it along the entirety of Third Avenue or just for that particular block? Next to Ricks and Bloom, you know, spit.
Well, from my standpoint, those are the only two that I've asked for. And I got an email just the other day from Bloom. So I don't know when your discussion was on that with her. Um, but they've been asking for that for quite a while. Okay.
Was that prior to our, uh, public meeting in April?
Just got it like a day.
Okay, I will revisit my notes. I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention because the last conversation I'd had with her, you know, she was the one who also asked for backend parking as well. And so we're we will, we will look at angled parking for, for just this block. So currently it ends at the post office. No worries. Um, and I can, I can zoom down. So basically, um, what we've proposed to do for the two blocks between Dogwood and, uh, Beach Street. Is we can accommodate angled parking there and, uh, you know, uh, address it there. And we will 100% look into. Yeah. So I, I guess that was the other thing is we're trying to keep in mind that we're still moving vehicles through the area. Albeit 7,000 trips per day. But again, we're, we're trying to treat our downtown like a destination and not an obstacle. And we want people to stop and, and shop. Um, so we will discuss, you know, as staff further. I'd like to get a copy of that email too. So I make sure I'm working with the best, you know, most current information. And then, uh, you know, follow up with the business owners. And yeah, there's one, we can definitely put in angled parking there. It's, it's our decision. Sorry, not ours, your guys' decision. Uh, and we want to, we want to address, you know, the community's concerns with this project. So, uh.
Levi, I had another question for you on it's regarding TIB, are they, or this project requiring the electric scooter lane?
So that is, uh, uh, it's not an electric, it's just a multi-use lane. You can see bikes, you can see e-bikes, scooters. You know, the, those are allowed uses within bike lanes. So, um.
But it's shorter than the bike lane, right? Same size?
In terms of width?
Sorry, no, no, I'm, the fonts are like point zero two. So, uh, okay, let me see. I think it is the same. Okay, it is. Okay.
Yeah. And then, and then I just wanted to clarify one more thing. So the green lines you've seen here are just to indicate where the, the proposed bike lanes are going. We are not painting anything green, right? This is, this project is intended to reduce costs, not increase costs. So just FYI, that's just to point out like, hey, we're putting in a bike lane here. This is a change. Um, but yeah, as far as I know, those bike lanes are, you know, legal for, uh, those forms of, uh, transportation. So, um, I believe Jeff's taken notes. We'll look into the angled parking for this one block. And just to be specific, on the south side of Third Avenue at that location, or would we like to see angled parking on both the north side in front of, uh, Jazzer size?
So I, I believe our throughput is Broadway. Or through, yeah, I mean, throughput through downtown, I believe what they're trying to get us to do is more parking and slow people down. Am I not correct? Well, my, my question is not really about the parking as much as the goal of what? Slowing people down, making it more pedestrian and shopper friendly? Sorry, I mean, if, yeah, you can jump up there with, and share with Levi. If you, I'm asking a question. So step up there with Levi. Sorry. I mean, you're wearing your, you're wearing your Downtown Business Association hat, correct?
Yes. Always.
I assume part of the, I mean, and I think, and I think it's what Levi, Levi is also trying to attempt to do here is I, I, one of the goals here is to create more parking, create more of a shopping environment. Wanting people to stop and park and shop. I mean, those are all the goals of this, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I believe if we're worried about, back to supporting all through thinking of the throughput. You know, getting people to home that don't want to stop. They have Broadway and Division, I believe. Right?
Yep.
I mean, I think that's, I mean, we're just trying to get us all wrapped into what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here. So if we're going to think about that. Um, I think, and, and I understand where you're at with third down, down there where you do have, there's a parking lot next to the Columbia Basin Herald. I mean, that, that, that's, that's one run, that's right by Ricks where you start thinking about people getting in and getting out of those parking lots. So I understand the challenges. And, and so I think, uh, that the biggest thing I see about this whole thing, it's no different than anywhere. Um, is a, a large educational piece. Is a, a large educational piece on, on uh, getting people to relearn how to drive.
Yes.
Well, I mean, that's the same thing on Division. I mean, it's still, people have a hard time understanding that there's a turn lane there. So well, even turning, they don't always get there till right at the last second. So, just, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. What, what is the downtown? I, I would, I would ask um, also that Alan, are you representing the chamber? You're not representing. Okay, well, I, I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to figure out what, what we're trying to, truly try to accomplish, not just the chip seal, but the restriping. We, we heard, and, and I think I want to remind people, we did this pilot project and then got lit up right after we did it by people on those, and, and we're not a community of Priuses. I mean, we have a lot of large vehicles and the problem, the unintended consequence of angled parking is that site issues and that type of stuff. It's gonna, we're, we're gonna get that same group on the back end of this saying, I can't get myself, I'm afraid to pull out. So, so these intersections, are you, are you going to address that at some point with angled parking?
Yeah, essentially, you know, with angled parking, we have to follow sightline protocol. You know, so it'll, it'll lead to increased buffers and there may not be a net gain of parking stalls depending on how many driveways are between the block. I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's, you know, for preference, yeah, we can put an angled parking and it slows people down, but it may not hold any more amount of, you know, vehicles or capacity. Um, I believe there was a Vision 2020, once upon a time that talked about uh, some of these original efforts to convert the downtown to more accessible and how to set up your windows and, you know, to, to attract use. What I, I'm not a planner, um, but I, I've read some things. So, you know, just looking at Ricks and Bloom, they have a zero lot line setback. So that's a cue that it's part of a, it's intended to be part of a downtown, right? Not next to a interstate. You know, you don't see those types of things along uh, you know, these other parts of the, the community. So it's a balance because by adding additional parking, you create opportunities for more investment. They, they don't have to, you know, you don't necessarily need as much parking lot off-street. You can put in more brick and mortar, uh, because you'll have sufficient parking. My understanding is also that in the downtown area, you have your uh, key locations that pull people in. And then as they're walking from their parking stall to that, you know, destination, oh, there's a jewelry store, there's a this, there's a that. And you, you know, you pull them into, um, you know, just like with milk at Walmart. You go in for milk, but probably walk out with something else because you gotta pass everything and, and that kind of stuff. So uh, we will look into how to, you know, if, if there's a benefit to the angled parking, if it increases. But we, we also do recognize that alternatively, you know, there are, there is Holly Street, you know, so we, we, we want to do this right the first time. I'm not, I don't think we're gonna, I'm not, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it. If it, we, we could do similar to what we proposed in front of the physical therapist with angled on one side and parallel on the other. So uh, in front of Jazzer size, they've got two driveways, three, they've got three or four driveways into that business. And at some point in the future, if we were to reconstruct, you know, downtown and continue to expand it to absorb it into part of that downtown network feel, um, we would probably look at eliminating some of those driveways, which adds additional parking. You know, so circling back to this project and, you know, those future considerations, uh, we'll uh, yeah, we'll look into those options and follow up with the, the business owner and then follow up with council. Um, and I guess I, I should just clarify one thing as well. Because we're creeping up on the, you know, that construction window for this year, we'd like to also as part of this uh, study session, request a motion to allow us to, you know, if we address all other concerns from council, uh, allow us to advertise the project and did we lose? Correct. So we
One of my questions is when is this deadline or the last thing that changes can be made?
Um, essentially before it's striped, right? So if at, during the course of the project, we learned something new, right? We run the projects, we can do change orders. And if we have uh, you know, identified quantities, as long as we don't exceed those quantities, we can usually modify the plan sets. So um, and then there's the, the time of award, which we're gonna open up bids on the 17th of, June 17th. And then we'll be at council, um, the following 24th to accept the project, right? And we can make changes. It gets more serious then? Via change order. Correct?
So, oh, wow, that is really sensitive. So yeah, it, as far as, you know, in our, in our bids, we have quantities of this and quantities of that. So, you know, the tons of rock and the emulsion, and then we also have, you know, per foot striping. And so they give us a price per foot and, and they don't really care. You know, if, if we, if we, if it ends up being here, it ends up being here because we line it out for them before they start the actual painting process. But as long as we have a per foot price, and if the, and if the quantity changes, you know, 10% one way or the other, it doesn't really matter. Uh, and like Levi says, that's, that's the cheapest part of the whole project is the, is the paint. So where we end up finally putting the paint uh, can be fairly fluid until we get up to that point. So.
So what you're asking for is a motion tonight to do what then?
Uh, to authorize staff and city manager to uh, solicit bids or go out to advertising, you know, and uh, if we have to through the uh, bid process, put out an addendum. You know, we can do that saying, hey, then we're gonna change four parking stalls or whatever, right? And then give them more time to review. Okay, what does that do to our project or bottom line? How are we gonna bid it? So there, there is still opportunities, but I think I would also like to just point out, we wanna, we wanna move ahead as fast as we can and not get hung up on what, you know, whatever it ends up being. Um, so uh, appreciate that comment and I'm glad you guys are asking these questions. So uh, this is pretty informal, right?
So tell me about, I'm kind of struggling with bike lanes because I know that bikes can be on streets and on highways. So why are we taking up space for bike lanes when we really don't need to do that?
So that's a good question. Um, number one, we get a million bucks. Um, number two, number two, um, we already have sharos. And uh, i- if we can make that just a little bit safer for those trips, you know, maybe kids would feel more comfortable biking to school. There's different levels of traffic stress uh, that there, that, but uh, that rates the, the travel. So you've got the, the paths along the waterfront, right? Um, that is probably the most safe. But the things I've heard back from the community are there's no natural surveillance. Some people feel like it's dangerous to be back there at certain times of day. So, you know, allowing people to move through areas and utilize the space will reduce the amount of lanes we have to maintain. So we would only have to maintain the two through lanes similar to Valley and Airway. And it's leftover space, you know, so we're, we're just trying to utilize that space, create a little bit more safer conditions. You know, it's partially a buffer to the parallel parking and it's an opportunity for people to access the downtown or the parks or the other things uh, on bike. So for, for example, like I take my kids down the shared use path on Valley uh, that has the planter strip between 35 miles per hour, which we all know isn't 35 miles per hour posted, you know, speed limit. But I'm comfortable taking my six-year-old down that path to go to Woody's, you know? So this is just gonna make it a little bit safer, you know, for those trying to access the downtown, get to the surf and slide. You know, and so we're just trying to utilize, utilize that space as best we can to create the most access and uh, still maintain throughput. So appreciate the question. Okay, so uh, these are the proposed changes on this portion of the downtown. So I gotta zoom out a little bit. Okay, so this is our next portion of the uh, downtown area, uh, from essentially Cedar Street on the left side of your screen, all the way over to, uh, we'll just say Pioneer Way for now. Within this area, you will see the addition of parking. Um, on your slides, it'll be uh, difficult to make out, but any place where we've put like a plus four, do you see the numbers? So the plus three, plus four, that's how many uh, parking stalls we're gaining in the, in the downtown area. So uh, we've highlighted the areas with uh, oh, this is the wrong slide. Hold on, let me get the updated one. I knew I was gonna forget something. So this was recently updated uh, to this configuration. So another thing we're trying to do is connect the, the parks and the waterfront. Uh, some of you are familiar, you know, with the, the trail that comes up behind uh, essentially the alley there, you know, with the addition of a shero at this point, it gets people to the multimodal GTA facility, get some access to St. Caius Park. We're just trying to get them in and out of the uh, the downtown area uh, more efficiently through designated routes. Uh, so that's some of the changes. And then this also shows the addition of parking. So in front of the Grant County P U D, we've added angled parking, which gives us eight more stalls closer to the downtown core. So with the new restaurants in there, uh, the amount of trips going in and out of the P U D, it's a good opportunity to reconfigure it with more access, right? So these are the proposed changes through this segment. Um, and we'll go and do some additional detail with the cross-sections. I'd also point out on Fifth Avenue, with the reconfiguration of Fifth Avenue to add that turn pocket, uh, we've seen a lot of accidents at Alder and Fifth as well. And it comes down to four lanes, offset turning movements, a lot, a lot to think about and process. We would just want to put them into, you know, two-way left turn lanes, which uh, improve sightlines. Uh, and then it allows that additional space to be utilized for uh, bike, you know, the bike lanes or uh, or buffers. So um, that would be extended via sharos down to McCosh Park. Um, and connect people, you know, from the library to the park, right? We're, we're just trying to create routes and access so that people can visit our downtown and utilize it, you know, and we'll get more natural surveillance with people in the downtown. It may be less hospitable for others who just want to be in the shadows. So um, you know, that's, that's another benefit of having more, you know, access to and through. Um, so some of these details look like the following. Super slow. Okay, back to the PowerPoint. Okay, so what does that look like? Uh, Dogwood to Alder Street in front of the Surf and Side Water Park. Uh, angled parking on one side, and then you can configure it with three lanes. Um, so for all the cross streets and the driveways, now you know people are gonna make a left-hand turn and there's less likely to have rear ends. And now you're only crossing one lane of traffic versus two. Should be more efficient and more optimized. Um, this is Fifth and Division uh, to Pioneer Way. Uh, by reconfiguring and adding that turn pocket, you know, it will allow more predictability for the movement of the vehicles through the area. And again, this only sees approximately 5,000 A D T. You know, potentially less with Rite Aid going away and the hospital moving along this stretch, you know, there, there's some things happening there. So Hill Street, this was another one identified with uh, low vehicles, uh, low amount of vehicles and uh, four lanes. So we proposed to reconfigure Hill Street with three lanes. Uh, there's some hills there, you know, that drop down, creating, you know, potentially uh, shorter sight distance conditions. There's a lot of lanes there for so, so little vehicles. And, and so again, you know, our staff's thought process was why don't we have money to do other stuff? And when we're maintaining stuff that's oversized and underutilized, it's an opportunity to try and, you know, reduce those costs. So uh, we also know that Confluence Health at that location sees a lot of people in and out every day. And the addition of parking would be beneficial at that location. So we've proposed essentially from Division to Pioneer Way and Grand to Clover to configure the lanes this way. Um, reducing costs and all the things I've talked about before. And then in front of Confluence Health, uh, the main clinic, we can add that additional parking out in the street, utilize the lanes uh, and the space differently. So these are some of the proposed changes on Hill Street. Hey, moving on to Wheeler. So essentially from Pioneer Way. Questions? Uh, okay, sorry, keep, you do your thing. So uh, essentially Wheeler, um, you know, this is another location that, you know, I, I believe it was just last week that a motorcyclist was hit by Safeway. You guys may have seen that or, you know, not. Um, and I believe it was at the driveway. So by reconfiguring this location from four to three, we create predictability, we improve sightlines. And uh, just allow for the, the steady movement of vehicles through the area. Having that left turn pocket will also be beneficial. Um, Community Health is planning on connecting Coolidge to uh, to Wheeler Road. So they've purchased some homes, they're tearing out the homes, and then they're creating, create another access link, which is currently all accessed off of Canterbury. Um, so that will create better access into and out of that neighborhood and reduce some of the congestion. But having those turn pockets is gonna help with the predictability and not have people stop in the center lane on the way down the hill or up the hill. So um, that's the goal of the project. Uh, one other thing we're proposing as part of this project is east of SR 17. So we have five lanes in that location with 10,000 vehicles per day. Um, what we're proposing to do in this location is designate the outside lane as a right turn pocket into Ziggy's, into Oxark, into um, Milky Way, you know, and some predictability that you're in the outside lane, you're turning right, right? All the people that are moving through the area, well, they're in the middle lane, if they're turning left, we got a pocket for you. So by reconfiguring the lanes this way, we'll reduce the amount of uh, you know, wear and tear on the outside lane and just create better um, conditions for, for that part of the network. And then we have the potential option to add sharos in that point too, um, on those outside lanes. So this brings us up to Wheeler and L. Uh, this is uh, the, the compact modular roundabout project by um, converting the lanes down to three, it will optimize the transition from uh, well, it'll make it great because we already be in a single lane when you access that Wheeler and L location. You'll slow down, you'll yield, you'll move through, and they'll be less likely to see accidents at that location. So um, this will be complimentary of that project and vice versa. And uh, this is a cross-section of what that would look like. This is the area between Pioneer Way and Canterbury. Uh, we'll utilize the uh, the lanes as shown. This is the portion between uh, SR 17 uh, over to Hamilton. You get the outside lanes designated for right turns, the inside lanes for throughput and the middle lane for left turns. Uh, and then this is kind of another thing that we know about. We know that the port has invested a lot of time and effort into putting the rail in. And so with reconfiguring these lanes with a new railroad crossing at this location, uh, you're gonna have buses and you're gonna have tankers, you know, full of fuel that are gonna have to stop. So by, you know, the, with this configuration will allow for the outside lanes to be those stop, look both ways and then merge back into the traveled way and not obstruct the through lanes. You know, on the daily basis, because I believe they're only anticipating, you know, X amount of trains per, you know, this isn't gonna be a main line, it's a spur line. So this should make it more um, efficient. I don't know when they're gonna start their project, but I know they're going through the construction, uh, sorry, the right-of-way acquisition phase. So we'll be ready for them, you know, to configure it in this way and keep the network flowing. Um, okay, this is the portion essentially from Road L to Road N. With this With this configuration, we'll get a little bit wider shoulders. To utilize for all sorts of purposes. Uh, the program we have here shows a ride-share loading, you know, image, that's not what it's gonna be intended for, it's just to show, you got a wide shoulder. Your vehicle gets disabled, you're not driving off into a ditch. Right? Because the currently, there's only three-foot shoulders. So we're gonna try and keep them on the improved surface. Uh, I've also seen agricultural equipment utilize the shoulders, you know, to get out of the traveled way. And, you know, so there's the slow movement of things. I even saw a forklift running down the road one day. I mean, it's an industrial area, right? So we're just trying to designate those areas for other uses. Um, and the predictability of, hey, someone's stopping and going left. Uh, the, the shoulders could potentially be used for right turns as well. I was born in the country, you know, we were courteous, that's what we would do. Um, so, you know, maybe that would carry on with others. So this is essentially Road L to N, uh, four to three conversion. We're also working with the county. Um, you'll notice at this location at, uh, Road N and Wheeler. So the same problem we have at Wheeler and L. We probably have at Wheeler and, and Road N. I can't admit to that for liability purposes, so we're. We're, we're trying to address that, those concerns as part of this project to improve safety and efficiency. So. That essentially is, uh. That part, which brings me to my next point. We went ahead and mocked up some compact modular roundabouts at Fifth and Division and, uh, Dogwood and Third Avenue. To, to show TIB like, hey, we'll take more money if you got it. So this is essentially what that would look like in, uh, these locations. And would allow for that smooth and steady. That's what we're trying to get to. And it puts the driver back in the seat, not waiting for some light to tell you what to do. So, uh, we can explore a demonstration project, you know, to just confirm our, um, our theories. That, hey, could people move through here more efficiently if we were to put in a modular roundabout? Mythbusters did tests. And they show that they're more efficient, uh, if you believe what you see on TV. So you can actually flow more vehicles through, uh. The, in these types of configurations, and it's just more efficient. I mean, we've all sat at a light for. You know, minutes in the middle of the night when no one's moving on the cross streets because that's what the controller tells you, tells you to do. Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
To that type of traffic.
It's.
And to my knowledge, they're, they, they kind of passed, you know, now people said, oh, okay. Don't mind this.
And this is something we've added to the, uh, six-year TIP that you'll be hearing about here shortly, you know, Nelson, the division is another location. Where it's, we could put something like this in and it's first come, first served, right? Then you're not having to find that a gap. You know, if you're there first, you're, you know, free to, to yield, so, and, and move forward. So this is the Third Avenue configuration next to the school. Yes, Judy?
Sorry.
No, no worries.
Going back to the Fifth and Division light. I know out on Valley and Stratford, if there isn't anyone coming. Then that light doesn't, you don't sit and wait. Is that a possibility? Would that cut down some of the funds to do here? That make sense what I'm asking?
Uh, we continue to, and as far as like optimizing the, the signal. We could do that independently of the funds. This was just an opportunity to ask for more. This is not part of the project today. So, um.
I was just thinking, you know, you're talking and I understand about sitting and waiting when no one is coming, so is there a possibility to? Fix the lights so that it's, I'm sorry, I'm just sensitive to traffic, I guess, is, I don't know, lack of a better word.
Yeah, so we've got some, uh, units, radar units that are supposed to detect. And, you know, uh, transition the lights to accommodate the person, but depending on what the priority lane is. It sometimes holds that priority lane open for longer to get more vehicles through. And still causes the, you know, the, the waiting element. So we're looking at potentially optimizing the signals as well, uh, to address GTA's comments. Um, and this was only a proposal because we feel it's the, the safest and most efficient option. Power outages don't affect these, you know. You know, there's some benefits, there's pros and cons. And those lights are also, like I said, been in since the 50s or 60s. Nothing lasts forever, so. You know, if, if it does come down to it and we have to replace it, we're, you know, trying to propose these types of ideas. Yep. Um, okay, so this is, uh, the last slide. I wanted to end on a slight, a little joke. So this is how to drive in a roundabout 101. So car A, blue, blue car top of screen, this car is yielding properly. If it enters now, it will cause an accident into the roundabout. Car B, this car, uh, which is the yellow car at the bottom of the screen, this car is entering properly, there is no one to yield to. Uh, car C, it's the red car on the left, says this car is yielding to everyone for no reason because the driver thinks it has to. And then car D, the green car behind it, this car hates car C. So. So it is a learning curve. You know, we've seen reduced collisions at Yonozawa. I mean, there's virtually no traffic along the Yonozawa corridor. Because people come and they go, you know, it's. Uh, there's benefits, I've seen benefits on Grape Drive at seventeen. You know, they used to have that left turn pocket backup for 450 feet or whatever it was they expanded it out to. But the last person in who couldn't make it all the way in is hanging out there waiting for someone at 50 miles per hour to come let him know. You're in my lane, you know, so part of the roundabout at that location was to. Move people through the area more efficiently, not stay queued up a light for minutes, right? And to get that priority. And, you know, I drive that route often, and I, I don't know that I've seen backups 500 feet, you know. So. So I mean, do you feel like it's more efficient? Yeah, so that's why we're exploring these ideas, you know, and trying to just make. Little improvements, uh, with what we can, you know, to. You know. With the funds that we have to continuously improve where we're at. Right? Yeah, it's gonna be a, a lifetime goal to always get just a little bit better. And that's why we're exploring these, these things. So, um, what we'd like to do at this point is invite everyone to come look at the maps. And we have comment cards. We also know that this is gonna be opened up to public comment. We'd invite the public up as well to kind of discuss the project with you for, I think we'll start with 15 minutes or. Based on the numbers, maybe we could condense that down to 10. Uh, but we'd like you to look at the plans, talk to the, you know, uh, myself, Jeff and, uh, Richard Law, answer some questions. And then, you know, ask the public as they provide comment, what can we do to make this better? You know, that's, that's really what we're after. What do you like about it? What, what would you like to change? And, um. You know, kind of just thank them for their involvement too, because, you know, it's essentially their input that's gonna help make it the, the, the best it can be for the community. And, and provide that information, which will help our decisions. So, uh. Does the council want to ask any other questions before we turn the time over to the?
So just to clarify, because we've talked about a lot of stuff. The ultimate goal is that Third Avenue needs to be chip sealed and all of that, right?
Correct.
So that's. The first decision to make is yes, do we pursue that? The other goals are just as important, but. Uh, we're not getting funding for adding parking. We're getting funding to do the, or are we getting?
We are absolutely getting funded to add parking.
Okay.
And that is, uh, you know, I tried to leverage. The, the bike components to get us what we want, right? The, which is more money and the ability to reconfigure the lanes. So. Yep.
Thanks for that.
Levi, two, two things. One, we the road from L to N. On the cross section that I'm looking at that shows the, the right share, which we know what that is. Um, when you show the blacktop there and the distance, is that what's currently the width of the blacktop now?
There's approximately 53 feet. So, um. Our math is mathing, that should add up to about 53 feet.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty close.
So.
So I, I was just curious on, on. If we're utili, for utilizing the, just basically the.
Yep.
Asphalt bend.
Yeah, we are not.
Not adding, we're not adding. So when we go, when, when we go to what we talked about. A right-hand turn lane, let's say going into central terminals or Group 14 and, and some of the other businesses out there, that's not. Part of this, that's just. You're expecting, you're hoping that they scoot over a little bit.
And as, as that area continues to develop, you know, it opens up the opportunities to configure, you know, the right turn pockets. Right? Right?
So. Well, my question is, I mean, I would, I would make an observation, is, is the right-of-way? Is wide as the planner, planning strip?
Uh, we have approximately 14 feet out to those power poles.
Okay.
You know, as shown. So, uh.
So we have room. I mean, if we chose to, to go wider with the third, like when, when it's needed, we believe to make, quote unquote, a, a true. Right-hand turn lane, the room is there without having to acquire any more right-of-way.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, so when we go to expand, if we need to, we can add those elements. You know. Or, I mean, and this is what I feel is with additional routes. You know, you're not disrupting the through traffic as much because you're not gonna have as many vehicles utilizing the same corridor.
No, I, I understand, but I'm just thinking of truck, truck traffic's the big one. You know, at certain times, just until we see it in play. We're not gonna 100% know the impact of it, but, but I'm, my question is, we have the room. And that, and that's what I, I didn't want us to see where we're getting into.
So I believe in, on that section, we have 80 feet of right-of-way, correct?
That's, that's what I thought. I was, I knew it was pretty wide.
Yeah, so 53 feet, yes, so we have. Got another eight feet at least beyond both edges to.
That, that, that's number one. And then number two, just back to just your funding in general and everything. So I think what, what really, um, and, and. You said it, but started a little bit. The, the funds came due to, a, a lot of it due to the multimodal portion of it, meaning. If, if we were to try to get rid of all of the bike lanes, we may not have our funding.
That, yeah, if we choose not to include some of those elements.
Right.
You know, then they may not be interested in funding a project that doesn't accomplish.
Right.
The safety element.
So I think that's how you were able to basically help get the additional parking though.
Absolutely.
Incorporating all that.
100, 100, I do that with a lot of things.
No, I know, I know. No, I, I get it. Okay.
I have a question for Rob. Uh, because I think we're, we were supposed to discuss two things tonight. We're already at eight o'clock and we haven't looked at the maps. Are we still doing the second item? I know it was just a discussion, but.
That's up to you. It's not a big rush to get the ETA policy done tonight. If you want to hunt it to another night, you certainly can.
Yeah, yeah, that, I guess that's my suggestion, depending on where we're at, after we look at this and, um, we. May not. Want to do the second item. Sound okay, Deputy Mayor?
You know, and I would also, uh. You know, if we want to skip the table element too, if you guys feel like you've heard enough information for one night. Okay.
Okay, we also have, we also have some people. Remote. So, um, let's do like three minutes because we're starting to run over time. For the, the other segment, so that's. Minutes. And I can't see where they are, so I apologize. We want to do it.
So they have public comment, is what you're saying?
They don't have, yeah, please.
I'm just saying that, maybe you can let them know we're doing that.
That area. Why you see?
Hey, we're gonna. Let everybody peruse the map for 10 minutes and then put the discussion here.
Let's do that. 10 minutes. Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to peruse the maps?
Yeah, so Mallory's seen it. I see a couple new faces here. Yeah. It's a lot to process, so I'm just trying to make sure, you know, we're providing good information before, to get good input.
Great. Deputy Mayor, it's you then.
Yeah, thank you. Come on down.
Okay, since there isn't any public comment, let's just move on. Was a public hearing? I'm just learning this.
So, Kiara, can I ask a question? So we're not perusing the maps, right? So we're not doing that 10-minute break, is that correct? Okay, um, I still recommend that, um, you, um. Formally ask if there's anybody that wants to give public comment because it is on the agenda.
Is there anyone who wants to give public comment? Comment is closed?
I think Le, Levi is asking, or, or the staff is asking for some direction, correct? I mean, that's, that's number one. I mean, I, I do know time is of the essence, jobs are important to get out and jobs are also important to get. Bids and, and get going, so I would make a motion to approve. I guess, what do we?
That you go out to.
That you go out to bid on this project? And that we need to continue to just work with the public as, as well as updating council on the striping of downtown.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
In favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, Levi, and the whole group that clearly spent a lot of time looking at all of these roads and figuring out and asking, I mean, that's. How much time did that take? Thank you. Thank you for the attention.
Are we ready to move on to the extra? ETA?
I'm gonna try to make this really easy on you tonight.
Thank you.
So, um, thank you for. Allowing us to bring this back to you. So we had met with council. And unfortunately, it wasn't at that many, but we met with council previously to discuss our options for creating an ETA policy for the urban growth area. And, um, we presented that back on April 15th. You provided comment and direction. And I was able to gather notes from staff that were in attendance and made a ton of edits to the proposed policy. So what you have in front of you are two versions. You have the redline version that shows exactly what's been changed. And you have a clean copy where we accepted all the redline changes, so you can review either one. Um, I will do a very quick summary of what was changed. If you would like me to put it on the screen and go through the document, I'm happy to do so. Make sure that pops up. There we go. So very quick summary, the very first thing I did was I went through and fixed some punctuation errors where we caught them quickly, did some. Quick grammatical changes, but overarching, the big change was that we went from a document that provided you options to choose from. To a document that actually is turning to a policy and procedure for how we're going to handle the requests to connect in the UGA. Uh, the very first section, we made no edits to whatsoever. We took the principles and requirements for providing water and wastewater and left that the same. Um. I'm gonna go ahead and skip way ahead here, hopefully I don't make it any sick with fast scrolling. Uh, we swapped our annual deadlines, we, we included some information about capacity being provided by zone. And that we will try and provide projections each year, you'll get an updated projection for the following five years. So as things shift within the system, you might have a number for 2027 that might look a little different when we come back to 2026. Based off of what's going on, on in the system at that time, uh, but you will be getting five years. At every time, every September when it's presented to you. Um, any vested development in the permitting pipeline will also be provided and subtracted from available capacity. There is a quick comment there that because of previous history for not always requiring certificates of water availability. Uh, we will have some work to do as staff to go look at historical and try and connect some dots. So it might take us a little bit longer to get that for you this year, but we will make every effort to have a full. So it might take us a little bit longer to get that for you this year, but we will make every effort to have a full picture for you by September. Um, we swapped from having one deadline for applications to two. So November shows that it's now deadline number one for semi-annual application. And that, uh, that'll be considered for allocation in December of the same year. If we scroll to the next page here, we've got May 1st is the second application deadline. With the ability to allocate in June of that year. So we're trying to give an opportunity for developers to apply at two different timeframes. Yep.
Hey, back to the September 15th deadline, um. Uh, did, were you able to check with consultant to see if it was possible to, um. Allocate capacity by zone by September 15th of this year?
Yes, we did confirm with RH2, who's currently our consultant handling our Rado Mado, that they will be able to provide that to us by September. And I jump down, you see a lot of removals where we took again, those options out and just removed them because we've made combinations elsewhere. Uh, your original option one, which was that tiered evaluation method, um, I removed it as an option and we actually are now combining. Part of option one and option two, and we removed option three completely. So, um, it's easier to see in the clean version. This is a lot of redlining, but I, I took the sections where we were explaining how the year ERU allocation occurs and what it relies on to do it. So the system model and just moved it to the beginning of the section. Uh, under evaluation, we did clarify that we were going to classify, staff will review any formal requests. We're going to classify them. With zero, one and two as those classifications. So, um, we're doing kind of a hybrid approach like was recommended by council. So. I'm going to scroll down here. Uh, did make a clarification to the wording for how we would handle. Those class zeros where there are budding city limits already, that if it does include an emergency hookup request. We can execute the ETA while they work through the annexation process. Um, but granted, those ETAs give us power of attorney. So at any time, council could then choose to annex them if that process goes. So. Rest of those were just some punctuation capitalization changes. We removed the class three and four because anything that doesn't fall into class zero, one and two. Um, as outlined below, are going to bump to the other processing steps. So we now have, uh, two steps for processing. We've got the classified requests, which are the ones that staff will be able to put into those zero, one and two classic categories for you. We will provide that information to council for review. And then step three B is where we take anything that doesn't fall into that classification. And we're now bringing it to you with a summary, um, where we're going to summarize what we were able to gather from. The application, knowing that the application at first is a very broad scope conceptual more often than not. Um, so we will summarize that and then provide it to council as part of step four, which is the actual ERU allocation. So again, we were combining option two and option one, and we took the. Can, the reasonable criteria, we took what we already had and added in the two that council requested, which was the capacity by zone or connected zones. And known or projected new development within the zones. So those are now added in as well. Did make a clarification under the ETA finalization that, um, elsewhere in the document, we were asking that they pay all fees applicable upfront. And just to clarify that if for some reason there's any outstanding, rather than saying again, that you're going to pay all required fees, you're going to pay any outstanding fees at that point. Because you should have already paid for them. And then failure to return, we just clarified some grammar there. And then ETA inaction and returns, uh, we did clarify that the ERUs will become eligible again for use on other developments in the current year within city limits. Or go back into the pool for allocation at the next semi-annual application deadline. So you have a lot of red lines where I removed out those other options. The last piece of information that we updated was pertaining to the 200 gallon per day. Average daily demand for ERU. So council had requested, and I didn't put it specifically into this document, document, but it is in your addenda bill. Where I explained, uh, the reference to where Washington state, you would ask what the reference was for the guidelines. And, uh, Richard had done some research for us that the Washington State Department of Health Water System Design Manual states that for projects that propose to have separate irrigation systems. The design of the potable internal only use water system can be, uh, predicated on the estimate of 350 gallons per day, per ERU. But they further clarify on the next page of the document that you can use 200 gallons as a minimum. So they do not recommend going below 200. So, uh, we've updated that and included it in the definitions. So now as far as asking for action, at this point, we're not asking for action. We're asking you to continue to review the document. Provide further feedback and the plan to be to have staff bring it back to you in June or July. Any questions?
Um, is this allowing for public comment? Alan, did you want to address some of the questions you had on this? I mean, you and I both saw the same thing, so.
Um, when you, Alan, what's it like? If you get to row, uh, page four. Wastewater, uh, paragraph one, second line, you've got, uh, without causing service, negative service impacts. So there's an extra service in there. Just a little clarification there. Um, then you get to. Page 10. Uh, ETA inaction returns, just a clarification question here. The way that I'm reading it, uh, if an entire subdivision doesn't utilize and is hooked up to. City water and city sewer within two years, does that mean that the entire ETA is done? If you, if you read it. Excuse me. The terms of the ETA must be met through service connection and or meter installation within two years of recording. Or it terminates pursuant to resolution 3717. The terminated ETA shall be returned to the landowner and the city will record a release of the covenant. Um, the ER, ERUs will be, um, become eligible for putting back out. So. The, I think it needs to be clarified, um, what happens after two years if you've got a 20 lot subdivision that's in an ETA and only 10 of them are actually connected? Does that make sense?
And I would, I would take council's direction on that. We didn't directly address it. And so we can. Take your comments and see how you would like to handle that. I think it might be a little different. We might want to hear, and Richard can chime in. It's, it'd be different for maybe a subdivision that only has 20 ERUs that we're allocating versus one that might have 150 or 200. So you might look at some different options and we can come back with some for you.
Okay. My, my thoughts on this is usually if it's in the, if it's. Especially if it's not a class one or two, or a class zero, or whatever we're calling it, you know, where they're immediately going to annex and those types of things. If it's one of those remote and it's a larger one, we're going to have to execute a developer agreement. And so those, if, if it's a different than, we want it to be different than this policy, that can be. Uh, my understanding is the council wants with all of these agreements and things, we want the ability to have a back door. Where if there's an inaction by the developer that, that we can, we can essentially. Take those ERUs back into our pot. Uh, and so that could be enumerated in the developer agreement is, is, is my one thought. Um, I think most of these other ones, if we're talking about smaller, like one lot or two lots or whatever at a time. Then the two years would seem to be, uh, reasonable in that case. So I, so I, again, we're. We're looking to establish the policy, but, um, would we want it to be if we're talking a large, uh, major plot subdivision? Uh, would we want it to be enumerated in the developer agreement? Or do we want it to be, uh, that those larger developments be somehow encapsulated or captured in this policy here?
I would prefer it in the, uh, individual agreements because that is more specific generally. And then you have guide, this is actually like a guideline as opposed to a specific agreement. So I mean, uh, I don't know how Mark feels about that, but to me. Guidelines are always up to interpretations, whereas, uh, contractual agreement is, is what it is. That was just my.
And I believe on the, under the circumstances that we had, um, Rob, you can maybe remember this, on the ones that we chose to, that we needed to move on prior to this policy. We are, we are. We are setting out some specific guidelines based on the size of the project. Um, through a development agreement along with that ETA. So it makes most sense. That, and that's, and that's kind of when we gave direction on, um, this ETA policy was, was basically to, to. Um, one encompass those, those areas that, that we need to serve because maybe emergency, uh, reasons. Um, a, a butting the city already that, that's in the UGA, we're, we're going to be also doing the annexation at the same time. But this was set up and, and the not to necessarily encompass. Say Paradise Point, you know, um, that, that's out there, clear out to the north. That will, will have a development agreement associated with it that will further define. How many ERUs per phase or whatever is determined and, and how long they'll have to, to utilize those. Um, so, but, but point well taken, it needs to have some sort of certainty irregardless.
That's all I had. Yeah. Thank you.
So could we add in that portion? Or based on developers agreement? So two years. Minimum or for any project, but it could be larger based on that developer agreement.
Yeah, I will, uh, get some wording put together. I'll run it by our city manager and. We'll bring it back to you updated.
Yeah, I was thinking along the same lines. I, I was actually looking at step three B where. We could state that there will be an agreement in, as part of step three B. And so then we know, we know we'll be doing an agreement, a development agreement if we do step three B.
And maybe, and I, and I don't know, we, we could think about the size of the project triggering that. You know, I mean, if it's a 10, 10 lot subdivision, this isn't, this isn't un, unreasonable. But, but somehow there could be a trigger for a size of project. I haven't put my head wrapped around yet. Even though what I do for a living, um, what that would be, but, but we could probably think about it a little bit to be reasonable. So there might be some automatic trigger that says you're going to be now entering. Into a development agreement of some sort to, because I, and we, we know out in, in certain areas. There's some larger tracks that definitely will be phased or, or some, something much bigger than we can probably guarantee it day ones. So we need to be thinking along those lines.
Yeah, and I think we have enough to go on to draft something that makes sense. So that was a really good point that was just brought up. But we are, we're still in public comment. So, Your Honor, I'd recommend that you just ask if there's any other public comment at this time.
Have any other public comment?
So do we have what we need to, uh, bring you back a, a policy for your adoption in the next month or so?
Is there a way before we, before we do that, maybe with community development, um. Public Works Committee at the very least could take a look at it too. I mean, the whole council needs to, but, but, well, I'd like. Sure.
So I need direction on that then.
Mark, did you want to see a sample, uh, agreement? Yeah, I mean, we, we need to see what, what's, before we say we're ready to adopt, I'd like to see the, with the edits.
Sure. We could bring it back to you at one more council meeting and then adopt it at another council meeting.